I'd like to call to order the October 9th, 2023 Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Mr. Ritchie, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie here, Ms. Willenthaler.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Gooden.
Here.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Deeds.
Here.
Mr. Posgrove.
Here.
Time ends 7:02. Now I'll need the approval from our August meeting minutes. There were no meeting in September, so these will be for August.
I read the meeting. I'll move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Willenthaler. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie abstaining, Ms. Willenthaler.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Now is the time for public comment for items that are not related to our agenda this evening, so if there's anybody that wishes to speak for items that are not related to our agenda. All right? If you'll be speaking with us tonight, could you please stand and take an oath? If there's any chance you'll speak to the commission. Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore for our first application.
The first application on tonight's agenda is variance 23-011. The address is 1037 Groveport Road. The applicant is requesting a variance Chapter 1195 to permit a new single-family dwelling to be constructed behind the existing accessory buildings. This subject property is a 32-acre tract on the south side of Groveport Road, is an R3 residential. There are currently no dwellings on the property. The applicant has indicated that the existing single-family dwellings have been converted to accessory buildings. Properties to the east are several large home lots on Groveport Road, also zoned R3. Also property to the east from the rear tail of this property is the Canal Winchester Elementary Schools. To the south of the property is the Walnut Creek Park, that's owned by City Canal Winchester, with similar zoning. And then to the west of the subject property are farm fields located in the uncorporated Madison Township, the uncolored area here to the left. The subject parcel again is a 32.86-acre tract on the south side of Groveport Road. The applicant has indicated that the former dwelling units of the property have since been converted for agricultural purposes such as a hay barn and wagon storage. There is a second former cabin on the property that the applicant has indicated is a tractor storage. Two more accessory buildings on the lot in addition to a large horse barn and arena complex. Again, the applicant has indicated there's no dwellings on the property. Here is an aerial photograph you can see from Franklin County Auditor from March of this year. And then just to kind of orient people on what they're looking at as they're driving down the street, this is kind of what the entrance of the property looks like. Very wooded, long driveway, can't see any of the buildings that are back behind. Some of the buildings were really a surprise to me, just looking at aerials on the county's website, some of them don't show up until you start to get kind of pointed out where they are. Here's a kind of clear view here of the main portion of the property we're going to be talking about. You can see the existing accessory buildings in this image as well. The applicant tonight is requesting approval to construct a new single-family home on the parcel. R3 residential properties are only permitted to have one dwelling unit, so that's why it was important for the applicant to inform the commission here that the existing buildings have been converted to no longer be dwellings. Photographs of the exterior only of those buildings have been provided tonight by the applicant in your packet. I'll go over those here. So up on the screen are the existing five dwellings, excuse me, five accessory buildings on the property. The front one here is the former house that was at the front of the lot. The applicant has indicated this is for, I believe, hay storage. Just below that is the large horse arena, kind of horse barn complex with an accessory building that's detached here off to the side. Looking at this side of the screen, you have an A-framed old cabin building that has been modified with two overhead doors for tractor storage. Another, what looks like a former dwelling, looks like maybe there's a garage or something that's kind of sub-below grade off to this side that was, has also since been converted, and then a detached garage here to the rear. Chapter 1195 of our zoning code indicates really that accessory buildings need to be built behind a residential structure. We do not permit properties to have accessory buildings without the principal dwelling unit. So in this instance, the applicant converting primarily this structure to an accessory building really put the property into noncompliance with our code, as there was no longer a primary dwelling unit on it. However, the applicant this evening is looking to construct a new dwelling on the property. Our code would indicate, if you kind of read the accessory portion backwards, that they needed to be completely behind this dwelling unit. Where the applicant is looking to place that building is really in line with these two structures in the back that put several of the existing structures in front of it. So that's what this variance request is for this evening. Just some information, you know, on the application here, you can see the applicant did look at some of the FEMA flood plain mapping based off of staff concerns being raised on where that's at in relation to the property. You can see, you know, outside of this commission's review this evening, but this dash line right here is the base flood elevation for the 1% flood zone, which is outside of the proposed building area. And then just to kind of supersede some of the applicant's graphics they provided me after the application was submitted, this is about approximate scale to the house that they want to construct. Eyeballed really the location based off of the box they gave me and the other set of plans, but again, to kind of show you here the relationship to the house and to the rest of the property. When looking at our zoning code, there are several criteria that need to be met for the variance process. Looking at that criteria here, again, some of this is looking at a different perspective because typically the house would be first and the accessory buildings would be last. In this instance, there is no primary dwelling. But when looking at special circumstances and conditions, that's one of the criteria that needs to be met. This parcel really doesn't have any in that regard. In fact, that the applicant could choose to demolish one of the structures up front and make room for this building. Instead, the applicant is looking to use kind of the topography to the property, use the existing structures and keep them, and use, you know, this as the chosen site kind of location. Because of that, the location that they've chosen here just happens to be behind some of the accessory buildings on the parcel. When looking at the other second criteria here for the little interpretation of the code, depriving the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. The literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of rights enjoyed by other properties. The R3 zoning district is very broad. It is the zoning for this 30-acre parcel, it's the zoning for the 5-acre parcel next to it, it's some similar zoning for the homes in the Winchester Village subdivision that are a quarter of an acre. However, when you look at the context of what's on the property, again, this applicant does have the ability to demolish a structure up front to make room for a dwelling, but if you take into the existing conditions for the FEMA flood plain boundaries, that graphic is in your packet, there is a lot of flood hazard area on the property. So in lieu of really dislocation or demolishing another structure, there's no other room on the property to have a structure outside of that base flood hazard area. When looking at this application as well, again, I provided that street view of the property. You can't see anything on the property, you can't see any existing buildings, let alone the proposed building they want to construct. The third criteria is special conditions and circumstance do not result from actions of the applicant. In this case, the conditions and circumstances, you know, are on one hand a direct result of the applicant. Again, they converted an existing former dwelling into personal agriculture equipment storage. They could have, in addition to that building, modified that building, demolished that building, and now would have had this variance section in compliance because that's the very first structure, the residential structure on the property. Again, with the intent of their project, this design and scale of that building does not meet kind of what they want to do at that property. When looking at the fourth criteria here, granting this variance does not do any undue privilege that's denied by the zoning code. Granting this variance here would permit a single-family home to be constructed behind existing accessory buildings. Again, if you look at our code, the accessory building should come second, so that's kind of a deciding factor for the commission on the order of which this variance is being It's a very unique scenario, which is something, you know, we don't have, I guess, in the rest of the city, especially just with the number of accessory buildings that far exceed the number permitted in our code. The next criteria is that granting this variance doesn't adversely affect the public health, safety, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. This variance does not affect any of that criteria. Again, the property is heavily wooded, it's not visible from the public right-of-way. The visual impact of this project would be negligible, as you would not be aware of this project going on other than from, you know, a satellite view perspective. Granting this variance is not solely based upon this property being put to better economic use. There are no current home sites on the property, so right now there is no economic use as a single-family dwelling, and that granting this variance does not permit a use otherwise not permitted. In fact, it puts the property into compliance because there is not a dwelling on the property which should be there to start with. So based off of the analysis and the application put together by the applicant, staff is recommending that variance VA 23-011 be approved as presented.
Questions for staff?
Just, just probably a minor one. Given the scale, it's kind of hard to tell, but what's the rough setback off the property lines? I mean...
So the plot plan for exact dimensions of the home have not been provided at this time. However, if you look at, kind of just drawing a box around this building here, if you go from kind of tip of the front porch to tip of the back of the house here, the home is roughly a 100-by-100-foot box if you kind of drew a neat line around it. It helped this horse barn, it was like 106 feet wide, so scaling made it possible. Based off of the information provided by the applicant kind of in this slide, it looks like their intent is to have it, I think that says 55 feet away from the property line. Our code would have the single-family dwelling setback 10 feet. Again, this would be cleaned up for the building permit end, but based off of kind of the information here, the applicant didn't indicate a need for a setback variance, it's really just for the location.
And with the existing zoning R3, are they able to operate a business?
So the property is zoned, single-family, the single-family zoning district allows for home occupations that take place inside of the existing dwelling. The existing horse boarding facility they operate now is legal nonconforming, so it's something that was a part of the property when it was annexed to the community. They would not be able to expand on it from a structure standpoint, as it's currently not permitted.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
No.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Anything you wish to add?
No.
If you could please just sign in, and any, any statements or additions you wish to add to this dash report?
We do have a variance for the equine boarding facility. We did, it was several years ago now, 20 years ago now, from Canal. This was a Catholic girls' camp, Camp St. Rita. Our best idea was built in approximately the 1940s. Most of the accessory structures were built by them, and we have retasked them, refurbished them to meet basically the needs of the horse farm. What had been a duplex up front is now a hay barn. I just put 17 round bales into it yesterday, along with 300 bales a little bit before that top of the screen. I'm in the process of fixing that building up just for, for those types of purposes. Below the tenant, we used to call it the tenant house in this, or it's now the hay barn, but below that is the, we'll call it the horse complex. The barn to your right was built on the old swimming pool of the girls' camp, and the building to the left was an arena that I built. There's seven stalls there, and that's the maximum that we can fit in that structure, and that's as many horses as we want to do. It's, it's both a physical and a mental limit. The A-frame building was the chapel for the church. That's where I currently store my tractors. I have that tall overhead door to have the, I can go through and through with the tractors. The building immediately to the, below that, we call it the hut, it's my workshop where I store wood and do my maintenance issues. The building to the bottom right is an accessory, is a garage, right now it's filled with wood that we've taken down and had milled from the property. It actually used to be a residence a long time ago when Jean Davis operated that place. And the bit of history is that both of my daughters graduated from Canal, and one of my daughter's fourth-grade teacher used to live in that building. She's not very proud of that, but I will not tell her her name, but... So this, it is an active agricultural site. It's, we harvest wood, we have horses, we have trails, and we have wanted to have a house on this property for a long time. We originally bought it in 97, acquired the first 28 acres. Five acres up front came up, about five years after that, we purchased that, and then the last bit of it was a piece of property off to the west from Jim Stevenson, so that we needed more paths for the horses. So that's, it's actually a 42-acre parcel right now. But we, going back to, we bought it in 97, and from that point, we've always had, been on the three-year plan, we'll build in three years. Well, that's, you can see where, it just, with time and money, and we both were busy building our business. A lot of times we didn't have money, and a lot of times we didn't have the time, so we got put off, but now we have both, so that's why we wanted to do it.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I just have a couple, if I could.
Yeah.
So you don't live there now?
No, we live in the villages of Westchester.
Oh, okay. How big is the house going to be?
About 6,000 square feet.
Okay. Are you planning to run a business out of that as well?
No. Nope.
No? Okay. Just wondering if it was going to be an add-on to what you're doing now?
We have...
Having guests, or...
The only guests that we anticipate is our family. Both of our daughters are, they're both married, they're both developing their families, and we want a house that we are going to try to bring them back. Come on, we want, we want our kids to come and play with us.
Sure.
That's all we want.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So this is a variance request, so I'll open it up for...
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Roma Shapiro. And historically, I guess, I just found out tonight that maybe this property was not in compliance, because when we first bought it in 1997, we bought the back 28 acres from Jean Wilson, and there were two homes, two residents on the house when we bought it, where one was a split double and one was like the single-family residence where the fourth-grade teacher was living. And there were accessory buildings in front of that, so I guess back then it was not in compliance. I just realized that tonight, so historically it's been out of compliance in the past. The house that we plan to build is really what I want, is a generational home. My mom, who was, you know, in her 90s, I wanted to come live with us and have her own place to live in the house, and then my hopes is that as we age, our children will want to move in there, and then we can move to another part of the house, kind of like how people used to live 100 years ago. And that's what I see this house being. It's going to look like a 1800 farmhouse. We want it to look like it's always been there, and we would like to live like the people back then lived, where generations lived together and supported each other. So that's the plan for this home. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will now open it up for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, seeing none, I move we close public hearing.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
I do have a question. When was that annexed into the City of Canal Winchester?
That's a very good question. I looked back, the property file we have for this address is virtually, there's a sign permit in it, and that's it, it's virtually blank. I was able to see, let me see if I have a better photo here. So when I was looking at the preliminary discussion for building a home on it with somebody, one of the design teams, the auditor has this property as being previously three different parcels that have since been combined. Unfortunately, they don't make it very convenient to figure out when they were combined, but when looking at the three different parcels, if you follow my mouse here, the tree line kind of shows it. This was one parcel that had this dwelling on it. There was a second parcel that was a flag lot that included this dwelling in the back. And then the third parcel was majority of this wooded area, about half of this kind of horse arena, and included the main acreage behind it. I'm not sure when the horse arena was constructed, but my assumption is the parcels were combined because the horse arena crossed two different properties, and whether it was in a Madison Township or City Canal Winchester, you can't have a building that crosses two different parcel boundaries, so the combination occurred. That's why I'm not sure, you know, whether the business component of it happened in Canal Winchester or the township. I did speak to the property owner about that, that comment that he has the variance for allowing the business aspect of it. It may be buried in a file that's in, you know, a different building, but we don't have any record kind of of that. So I'm not sure, you know, how that were to take place. The only thing on the top of my mind I could think of is we have a conditional use process for home occupation that's an accessory building. You know, maybe there was a variance to that process to allow for it to occur, but our R3 kind of zoning district has been the same since about the 90s. So, you know, if this was prior to the 90s, then it could have been zoned something completely different. But from what I could find, just at a high level looking, I want to say this property kind of came into the city in the early 2000s, maybe late 90s. I'm just looking at kind of the expansion of that industrial park to the north.
Well, when the applicant bought it, what, did you think it was at Canal Winchester at that time?
It was.
It was? Okay. And you bought it in...
In the old days, we had to work the fire department, that we didn't have any labor stuff. Remember that? It was all of that, including the horse barn, and you were running... The only time it's gone to Canal was the 1990s, we bought a couple, it was still from Jean Wilson.
Can I just come to the mic? Sorry, I'm not going to be able to pick any...
Just so it's on the record. Thank you.
When we purchased the property in 98, we bought the back 28 acres, and that was in Canal Winchester. I don't know when that portion to the west was annexed into the city, that was before we, you know, owned the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, it probably was. Makes sense. So we bought the back 28 acres, and then there was a split double, and the single house at that time, which we ended up removing that building. That was, well, they actually burnt down. And the little, the little house that the fourth-grade teacher lived in, we converted it to a garage so we could store wood and farm vehicles there.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll be back to the...
Back to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve VA-23-011 as presented.
Second. All right, motion made by Mr. Willenthaler, second by Mr. Posgrove. Any further discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
All right. Variance to permit a new residential dwelling has been approved.
The next application is variance 23-012. This variance is Chapter 1157.04, subsection B1, to permit a new single-family dwelling that exceeds the maximum 35-foot height. Again, looking at the property here, the context of the proposed building in relation to the existing structures, when looking at kind of the relationship of where they're looking to put the building on the property, really the only kind of foreseeable viewpoint where you're going to see this home is from the elementary schools kind of area here. This to the right is kind of where the JRD does their practice football. You know, off to this side, the home would kind of sit closest to that area. The applicant has provided elevations of the home as well as kind of floor plans, just again, to kind of answer some of your guys' questions that you had this evening on it. On the right-hand side here, you can see the home is 42 feet, and this is 4'9/16" inches. The applicant has really asked for a variance for 42 and 6 inches to have a little bit of wiggle room there on the overall height. I asked the applicant if they had any kind of modeling on the home, you know, just to kind of give you guys some perspective on dimension. They sent me a 3D kind of model here, so I kind of panned around, did some snapshots, so you can kind of see what they're, what they're requesting here. Our zoning section, 1157, has a maximum 35-foot height and two stories. This would be a two-and-a-half-story home at 42 feet 6 inches, so it would be exceeding kind of both of those sections. But again, this kind of viewpoint here shows you the home is roughly 8,600 square feet, about 4,800 on the main floor with a finished basement, so to kind of give you just a sense of the structure they want to, they want to put in the property. When looking at the special circumstances and conditions, again, the R3 zoning district kind of applies to any large residential parcel from this 30 acres down to the quarter-acre parcels in Winchester Village. That has the maximum height at 35 feet, two stories across the board, no matter how big or small your property gets. The... The new single-family dwelling exceeds that at their peak height at 42.5. When looking at the literal interpretation of the zoning code and at the applicant, it would be deprive rights of other people in similar zoning districts. The zoning code again is, is general for all the R3 zoning parcels, for them to have consistent size and appearance. Most of the standards in the R3 zoning district are for minimum sizes, so if you look at minimum lot width, minimum setbacks. Height of the building is really the only maximum size provided in that zoning district. It's, that's pretty standard for all zoning districts, there's maximum sizes for really all buildings. When looking at special circumstances and conditions, do not result from actions of the applicant, again, like the previous application, the actions of the applicant is for this style of home and that really there are no special circumstances or conditions to permit a structure this size. Again, there could be a home and this really graphic here kinda shows it, you could make the home the same square footage, make it all two-story, make it all one-story. It's the applicant's desire for this architecture type that is necessitating their want for the height variance. When looking at our residential appearance standards, chapter 1198, that would apply to this home, so those are the minimum design criteria for how the home could be constructed. That is in addition to zoning for setbacks and other restrictions. This home meets all of chapter 1198 for architectural features, materials, articulation, et cetera. So this is strictly just a variance for the zoning section for the R3 district for the maximum 35-foot height. When looking at the criteria, this variance would adversely affect the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. Again, as proven as noted in the last application, this property is heavily wooded. You won't see this building from the public right-of-way unless all the trees are cleared from the property. The visual impact of the home, in that case, is negligible. Again, there's a small chance you maybe will see it from the elementary school side, probably more so in winter months when there's no leaves on the trees, but that'd be probably the case for any building you do, not just the height of what they're requesting. Grating this variance would permit the applicant to construct a custom home they have designed for their private parcel. This is really a one-off construction, so when you're looking at putting the property to better economic use, that could be at the discretion of the commission if the height puts, you know, this at a better economic use because of the style of home they're doing. But again, this is not a blanket for the entire R3 zoning district. Anybody in the R3 could ask for a variance for a height of a structure for any given circumstance. And that granting this variance does not permit a use otherwise not permitted. Again, there's no single-family dwelling on this use and either granting or denying this variance doesn't restrict them from building a home. This is just for one aspect of the home's construction. Given that, staff is recommending that variance VA-23-012 be approved as presented.
Questions for staff? So when they come, when the, they, if this variance passes and they go to construct the homes, that works strictly with staff on any other...
Yes, so they would submit, just like any other residential home project, elevations for all sides of the home for the chapter 1198 compliance check, that they'd submit a plot plan that shows setbacks, location for everything. Our zoning code requires any home over 20 feet has to have a basement. They indicated there'd be a full finished basement on this, so that, you know, has been checked, but we will look at all the other details for the constructability of the home.
Okay. Any max height conditions with fire department? Has anybody there looked at anything or any concerns?
Typically, we don't interact with the fire department on single-family construction. They look at it from a transient occupancy kinda standpoint for construction. So if you are in a commercial building, you know, you may not be familiar with it, how to get out in emergency scenarios, same with kinda hotels. Typically, they're not involved in any single-family.
Any other questions for staff?
Just a point of clarification, the chapter was 1157-04B2 or 1? Because you said 1.
It should be B1.
Okay.
It may be 2. I think it's 1, though. I said 1 enough tonight, I'm gonna be convincing myself, but...
Just curious, is there a better zoning?
We do not have any residential zoning district that permits what the applicant's requesting.
Okay.
It would either be a planned district. That was one of the items staff was asking the applicant about before filing, because when I talked with someone from the design team, they said that one of the houses up front was a dwelling, which would put this into two dwellings on one parcel, which would have to either be a multifamily zoning district or a planned district. And then when we were talking from the planned district standpoint, they could put in their development text this height request, the location request, however, when speaking with the property owner and him verbally indicating that there is no dwelling on the property, going through a planned district rezoning didn't make any sense because that would have been a six-month timeframe rather than two variances which could have been done in 30 days.
Got it.
Any other questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add?
Do you remember the George Brooks tax return? Well, Alec and I used that money to plant evergreen trees on the east side of the property and so the house won't be visible from the elementary school, except maybe the tippy-tippy top, because the trees were this big when we planted them and now they're like 30 feet tall. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a variance request, I'll open it up for public hearing, public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close. I see nobody rushing up to the mic.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Wilmthaller. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Wilmthaller?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve VA-23-012.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Wilmthaller. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Wilmthaller?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
All right, variance to chapter 1157-04B1 or 2 to permit a new residential dwelling has been approved.
We'd like to come see it when it's done.
Yeah, I think we'll, we want an open house, don't we?
Open house, please.
Any older new business?
In terms of old new business, for Mr. Ritchie's sake here, thank you for reviewing the draft of the community plan this evening. Again, the city council will have that at their meeting on the 30th for their kind of public review process and then they can move that into their full council for three readings. The goal is to get that adopted here before the year's over. That way, there's not any delay with potentially new council members, you know, joining, just trying to, trying to beat that window, I guess, in terms of streamlining the process. In terms of other kind of old new business, this meeting was supposed to have two more agenda items on it. I have a feeling that at least one of those will be moved to November. The November meeting is planned to be extremely busy, so please if we can get as many of you here as possible for that meeting. We have potentially five applications on it so far, maybe six, depending on people's willingness to get stuff in at the right time. So I look forward to that one. Bring coffee. That's all I have.
Mr. Moore, I do have one question. So a few business owners and/or residents have asked, what's the city's approach when we have a temporary sign or a sign that's not permitted in the Old Town District in terms of how do we notify the business owner or the property owner, or do we just notify the property owner? And what's our ability as a city to work with the property owner to remedy or to remove a sign that might not be allowed in our code?
Sure, so maybe to expand on that, so it's not so generalized for anywhere in the city, not just Old Town. But if there is signage that is not permitted, you know, I can tell you that we try to work off of if we know the person, we give them a call, right? That's typically how people like to be addressed. If we don't know the person, you know, as a tenant, if we know an owner, we'll contact the owner. If we know neither, we send a certified letter to the property owner, letting them know that there is an issue on the property. You know, those kinda three steps generally take care of most of everything going on. Now, that's just speaking very broadly. If there is those post-signs that are advertising for power washing, you know, commercial businesses and they're in the public right-of-way, we remove those and we store them for up to a week for someone to basically call and say their signage was pilfered, they want it back. Outside of that, you know, we try to remedy the situation when we become aware of it.
And if a property owner or a business owner wanted to seek a variance or some sort of, I don't think it'd be conditional use, do they have that right? If, if they wanna place a sign that doesn't meet our code, I mean, would they go through the normal process and come before planning and zoning?
Sure, so if someone wants to do signage that's outside of our zoning regulations, they are more than willing to file a variance from whatever section of the code they want relief from. I will say, depending on what section it is, it could be relief from size, it could be relief from material. If it's in the actual Old Town area, the Landmarks Commission would look at that request first to see if the relief should be passed to Planning and Zoning Commission. If the Landmarks Commission says, like, they don't permit plastic signs, so if someone wanted to do like a plastic panel sign, they said no, then a variance wouldn't make it sway to you guys, but if they said yes, they'd recommend approval of the variance and it'd go to Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, outside of Old Town, anybody has the relief to come to you directly. I will say again, there is relief from standards that exist, from size, material, et cetera, that's specified. However, we also have a section in our sign code that says prohibited, so that would be asking relief from something that you're not allowed to have with, period, which could also lead into if you're not allowed to have it, you know, what size are you looking to do? Is it, if it wasn't something prohibited, would it be appropriately scaled regardless? So the exponential of how many variances they would need depend on the circumstance, but if there is a path for anything, just, they gotta ask me.
Thank you.
Or if they don't like my answer, they can appeal it to you guys, which brings it to you guys anyway, but if you guys agree with them and not me, then they still would have to file for a variance or something. It just extends the process.
Sure. All right, thank you.
We prefer they ask you first.
I prefer they ask me first, too. I always do. Don't ask for forgiveness, that's, that's a bad business model.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Deeds. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Ms. Wilmthaller?
Yes.